Twenty twenty five at six oh five P M. At this time, we'll have our invocation. I want to introduce to you all, and I'm honored to do so, Raul Rio. He is the pastor of Compassion Center, right here in Monroe that's located on Winsboro Road. He's a husband and father of five kids. Pastors, are they all boys? I thought so. And he moved to Monroe from Dallas and Texas in August of twenty fourteen. And he had this mission, he said, impacting our society, especially in the south side of Monroe. And he's serving our Latino and Black community for years with excellence. And I know he's a business owner. He's in the construction industry, a contractor, and we're just honored to have you up here tonight. Would you come up to the mic, please? He's going to lead us in the invocation and pledge.
Lord, pray this. Heavenly Father, we've gathered today for this meeting. We ask for your guidance and wisdom in our discussions. May the words be spoken with respect and clarity. May our decisions reflect your will, grasp the ability to listen, potentially. And we thank you, Lord, because I know your will is to be all together and be on your kingdom, do your will. Father, we thank you for this meeting. There are no delays on your will. Thank you, Father, for everything. In Jesus's name we ask you. Amen.
I pledge my life as a flag of the United States of America and into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sanfranero. Ms. Haylon. Mr. Wilson. Mr. Berry. Ms. Cooper.
Present.
Mr. Johnson. Ms. Sheldon. Four present, three absent.
Thank you very much. We have a quorum. At this time, the adoption of the agenda.
With, I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda if I could. If we can get unanimous approval, I would like to add approval of travel for the Neville Color Guard. Where are the travel students from?
Biloxi.
Biloxi, isn't it on there? It was on the agenda, I thought it wasn't.
No.
Okay. They submitted it and it was brought to the board's attention in January. But we needed to ratify it at this meeting. So could we? So I'd like to move that we add that to the agenda. And we need a roll call vote because it has to be unanimous. Is that correct, Mr. Lawrence?
Yes, unless everybody says that by unanimous consent, it's all the agenda. You don't have objections.
No.
No objection.
So that would be.
Consent. G under consent agenda. Travel for Neville High School Color Guard. It's one of our consent agenda items. And we're going to vote for all two, six, seven of these. They've already been vetted and through our committee process. And at this time, we'll need a motion.
We've made that motion. I thought we proposed.
With the change, yeah.
With the change.
All right. That's been moved in second that we make the change to the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, nay, hearing non-motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. At this time, we have our point of pride moment. As you can see on the agenda, we have the Safe School Sports Award by the Nation Athletic Training Association. Is that the national? Jason.
Dunson.
All right. Is Mr. McCarthy here as well?
He is not. We actually have a basketball game going on right now.
Okay.
And so that's why I asked to come do this real quick and then I'll run right back to the gym.
We're glad you're here.
Thank you so much for having us entertain this. Hopefully this provides a little ray of sunshine on what would be considered a hard day, a busy day, all day long today. So what we have before you here is a national award recognizing Neville High School as a Safe School Sport Award by the National Athletic Trainers Association. This is a award that takes a three-year application to complete. And so what that does is that ensures that our student athletes are receiving the best possible care with best practices. And so we applied for that and it's taken three years to get that. We have to have position oversight, complete our emergency action plans, practice those regularly, standard orders, things like that. And also I'd like to point out, we won this award this year. I'd like to point out Waspin High School won the award last year. So two out of the three schools are currently recognized as Safe School Sports Awards within the city district, so that's awesome. Again, here other than other schools in town, I believe Washville Parish and Starings High School are also other schools that are represented. So again, we have outstanding individuals that take care of our student athletes. So thank you, guys. I wanted to present this word to you guys and tell you guys congratulations and we'll have that on display at high school. All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Awesome, thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Keep that.
All right. At this time, we have a resolution proclamation. And our leader superintendent will have a.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. School Board Member Training Resolution. Whereas each member of the city and parish school board shall receive a minimum of six hours of training and instruction as required by Act seven oh five of the twenty eleven Louisiana Legislature. And whereas the training and instruction shall consist of school laws of this state, laws governing the powers, duties, and responsibilities of city and parish school boards, educational trends, research, and policy. And whereas such instruction may be received from an institution of higher education in this state, from instructions sponsored by the State Department of Education or by in-service training program conducted by a city or parish school board, sort of central office, or the Louisiana School Boards Association, our training provided at the national level. And whereas each member of a city and parish board shall receive one hour of ethics training per year of their tenure as board members. Now therefore, being resolved that it became public record that Darryl Berry, twenty-one point five units, Jennifer Haylon, twenty units, Brandon Johnson, fourteen units, Michael Sanfranero, nineteen point five units, Brenda Sheldon, fifty-two point two five units, Eddie Ward Cooper, thirty-one point five units, and Bill Wilson, thirty-one point seven five units. Members of the Monroe City School District have successfully received and exceeded the six hours of required training as mandated by the Legislature of Louisiana. And all board members have fulfilled the mandate of one hour of ethics training for the year of twenty twenty-four. Certificate I been undersigned Superintendent of Monroe City School District do hereby certify that the above and following is a true copy of a resolution adopted at its regular school board meeting on February the eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Congratulations. And I will now give you your certificate.
Where's the guy? Travis wants that before. Mine's got a little picture in the high school. Go to the background. What we need to do is get them like a riser.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent. We are at agenda item number four, the consent agenda.
Mr. Sanfranero, we added G and that was a travel for Color Guard. For now.
All right. We'll need a motion.
I'm making a move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A through G. I'll second that.
It's been moved by Brenda Sheldon, seconded by Jennifer Haylon. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, hearing non-motion carries. We're at our new business agenda item. And we have vetted each one of these items that are listed here, A through E. A committee, a committee met on each one of these items. And all of them have to do with our curriculum improvements. And we had very good meetings on each one of them. So how do we handle these now?
Madam President, I wondered if, Mr. Lawrence, could we just combine all?
Well, I like the board is, if there's no objection, you make combine all of those items.
Yeah, I'd like to make most of that we combine, A through. Number six, new business, combine A through E together and approve.
All right. A motion has been made by Dale Berry, seconded by Brenda Sheldon. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, hearing non-motion carries. We're at our reports, agenda items. And we will start here with the report of our superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. First, of course, we had our, we had our business financial meeting prior to. And just to give you an overview, our financial report from our December twenty twenty-four for general funds and sales tax for this February the eleventh, twenty twenty-five meeting. General fund, revenue is approximately one million more than December of this time, twenty twenty-three. The district currently has an increase in salaries and benefits of about one point one billion in parts due to the following. The salaries and benefits that were in ESER grants, which ended on September the thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, so the general fund had to absorb those salaries and benefits. The L D O E restructuring of some grants required the adding of some salaries and benefits to the general fund. And that's, that was a result of that. Also, we had the payment of the Lexington Playground, the shades that they raised money for. And also we had to pay for the Neville batting cages. Sales tax and our total sales tax revenue received in December of twenty twenty-four. And that, those sales tax received were actually collected for October of twenty twenty-four. And we saw a decrease by fourteen point five eight percent for a total of four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And this is the second consecutive month of a decrease in our sales tax revenue compared to prior year's collection. And of course, we know those sales taxes will affect our employees in our June sales tax check. And so that, those numbers and those dollars from the previous year could go up or they could go down. And obviously, when we see that there's a decline in sales tax collection, that's, that's a great probability that those sales tax checks on employees will decrease as well. Nineteen sixty-eight sales tax revenues have an overall total decrease of thirty thousand dollars. It represents point five zero percent less than prior year overall. The nineteen ninety-four sales tax revenue has an overall decrease of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, which is one point three three percent less than prior year. Our two thousand and one sales tax revenue had an approximate decrease of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, which is one point three three percent less than prior years. And I just want us to understand that this does impact our employees at the, our June checks. And I know our employees are always eagerly waiting when they clean our check. And this will be depended upon, upon our citizens and our sales tax collection. Federal programs that are part of our super app, they have obtained the final ten percent allocation and we're currently working to complete the necessary amendments in those areas. And also I just want to share with you, with our constituents, our citizens and our board, that our academic highlights, you know, our Louisiana Department of Education and professional learning, the twenty twenty-four professional learning role now. And it states that a key component of overall school system strategic planning is the implementation of a comprehensive professional learning plan. Teachers need to lead high-quality teaching and learning every day rounded in standards. And it is the responsibility of the school system and the school leaders to support teachers. And with that being said, you notice that this is the first meeting. You know, see members of our academic team present with us because our academic team members, they are actually traveling today to New Orleans, Louisiana, to attend the Plain Top Literacy and Learning Conference. And the Plain Top Literacy and Learning Conference is one of the nation's premier literacy conferences, attracting education industry professionals from all levels. And we know that with our, our new format and what we're moving in our system, we're really focusing on early childhood literacy. We know that literacy and literacy is there every day, keep us skills to education. And so our educators will be in this training February the twelfth through the fourteenth in New Orleans. Miss Representative, Monroe City School District, we will have twelve of our literacy coaches present, along with our chief academic officer and other supporting members of our academic team. And they're going to gain great knowledge to bring back to our district. The district academic team and myself, we are involved in what we call conducting learning walks. And this is where we have gone to several of our schools unannounced. And we've actually observed classroom instruction and teaching and doing those walks. And at the end of the conclusion of those visits, our teams would get together to debrief about the things that we saw, the growths and the globes. And after that, we call in the lead, the principal of that school. We give those leaders what we found in our visits. And we also give them what we call areas of refinement, areas of reinforcement, and also our next steps. And I also like to share with us our literacy concentration, our DIBLES literacy data for the fall. We have what we call a B O Y, which is the beginning of the year test. It showed that fifty-six percent of our district K fifteen students were at benchmark. And at our mid-year test, we were at fifty-nine percent. And that was a three percent district gain. And even though we're really proud of those gains, we showed a three percent growth scored at benchmark. While we recognize that we still have more work to do, we are definitely pleased to know that we are moving in the right direction. And I'm just really thankful, and I would say this publicly, I really thank our team for the work that they're doing. I thank all of our employees. We are a district that rebranding ourselves and carefully regaining the confidence of our citizens and our board and citizens of Monroe, Louisiana. And we want you to know that we're doing everything in our power to help grow our kids to master each and every day. I know there are a lot of things that you see on social media. We had a lot of negative encounters, but I want you to know that we're very transparent. And we don't sleep anything, as they say, under the rug. Anything that's known that we need to change and we need to address, we do our very best as a district and as a team to make those shared decision-making. And I want to say just publicly, thank our team for their hard work. Thank our teachers and our support staff, our transportation staff. And I want to thank the board for your support. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Moore. All right. At this time then, the December twenty twenty-four financial reports. I know we've been just moved. Yes, we did.
You didn't at the beginning.
Okay, you included that, all right.
You did.
Okay, very good. At this time, I'll report our board members and I'll start here to my left.
Jennifer, thank you.
Board member A.
Thank you. Superintendent Moore, I think that is the first time I've seen a superintendent get applause after a financial report. Well done. It took a little bit. So wanted to ask, can we get an update on the building projects? I know we're nearing completion on at least one.
Yes, and so, we are still on track and certificate of substantial completion. We should get that in March. All electric and permanent gas has been turned on and the building has been secured so that no one can enter the building one Friday night, I believe it is. I got a text from Ms. Haylon. Of course, I drove, I drove by the building and I did enter that back door and saw it open.
Wide open and the heat's seventy-five on a thirty-degree night.
And so we did get that building secured. And so right now, all electric and finally electric and gas is in place. The building is secured and they're now putting out floor and it's, and it's completion is on schedule for March, which will be that consensus nearly a quarter, five days after that. Everything is one step ahead of the story.
Okay. Just a couple of other things. I wanted to express my condolences to Dr. Watson. Superintendent Moore informed the board that he lost his mother today, I believe that was. And so wanted to express my condolences. I know all of us, our hearts are with him and his family. Wanted to congratulate Mr. Moore with our HVAC program division department on his retirement after fourteen years. We saw that on our report as well. And also I mentioned last night when we talked about curriculum, really impressed with the investment that we're putting into our students and into diversity, equity, and inclusion, that we continue to know the importance of that in our district and really ensuring that no child is left behind, forgotten, or not included in the academic education process. So very impressed with the items that you and your team have brought us to ensure that we have the resources we need to meet the needs of everybody in our district. Very impressed with that. Also, just last to mention, also really appreciate the detailed reports, the effort in getting us information and doing it in a quality way so that we can really understand what we're looking at that's just more accessible for people as well. So want to thank you and your team for the hard work that you all have put in in moving the district forward. I had to remind one of our constituents that while we all have lots of great ideas for how we can make our district better, Superintendent Moore has been in place for less than a year and you can't do everything all at once. So we have to remember that this is a step-by-step process. And we really do appreciate the strategic planning process so that it's thoughtful and mindful process. So just again, a shout out to you and letting our community know that there is so much going on. It's impossible to communicate that, but it's showing in the testing results, it's showing in the schools. I think it's showing in the overall sense of a community within our district that people feel more confidence. And so I like that we're moving forward. So with that, I will stop.
Thank you, Lord. All right.
Thank you very much. I'd like to talk about the, thank you very much. We attended the Chat and Chew last Thursday and we had a wonderful, wonderful time. We attended with Superintendent Moore, the administrative staff of the Monroe City School System, and Ms. Betty Cooper attended as well. We had a, we had a really good, very good, prosperous meeting with the parents, very, very good meeting. And we visited them and we talked to them about how their children have improved so, how they are trying to improve as well. And we feel that it was so well-attended. I like it, I really do. And as I promised the students and I promised the teachers, I'll be visiting the school as I have in the past, except Mr. Jackson. I have not visited your school yet. But I do plan to visit the school and to see how they're doing and to talk to them about the situations that we're experiencing. We really did have a good time.
All right. Thank you. Board member Sheldon.
I just want to. I just want to, when we had last meeting, saw one of the things Ms. Haylon and Mr. Brandon for their time served as president and vice president, I think we did some, accomplished some great things last year and look forward to your leadership and Sheldon's leadership and move that forward. Mr. Moore, I think we got some good things in place and I appreciate all the team and co-pleasance that we're going to have this coming year.
Madam President, I have one thing, one note that I did not share with you. Prior to the meeting, we did get our, from our colleagues and email, we did get our audit report beginning June twenty twenty-fourth. That report has been, just that had been approved by the legislative office. So I did email that to you right before the start of the finance committee meeting. So we will plan to schedule for our next board meeting to have call raise and emails to come to present that financial report to us.
I've got a question about that. Just before the audit gets submitted to the state, shouldn't that come before the board for approval to send it to the state?
That's not part of the process.
No. Okay, so just once the state approves it, then it gets presented to us?
So, yes, so they, I didn't even have the final until yesterday. I just recently received it. So, and they didn't send it until the legislative auditor officially approved the report. So throughout the audit process, when the board chooses to, what is it? The compliance, the compliance questionnaire, that's the board agreeing to follow all the processes and procedures that are applicable for the audit. So then we just move forward with the process, get everything put together, and then they submit it to the legislative auditor for approval based on their findings and what have you.
And just please, I just want, please be, remember as Ms. Haylon said, Dr. Watson and his family, the passing of his mother, you know, his mother and his father. His father was a longtime administrator with Monroe City School System. And that's just, you know, a sense of his loss. So please keep them in your prayers.
Yes. Thank you. And I certainly want to echo our love for the Harrington family. A very fine family that you always serve it. And we're just so happy to have our C O O, he's our chief operation officer in Carrington Watson. And so we know how much he loves his family. And I knew his mom too, worked together. And so she is someone very well-loved. So we'll do our best to comfort this family and bless God to comfort them as well. All right. You heard.
Do you know when the Rangers will be?
You heard two people mention Chat and Chew. I want to make sure you all understand what that is. Our superintendent, along with his administrative team and various board members, we're going into neighborhoods, meeting with the communities, the people in those communities. And they are receiving us so well. They almost treat us like rocks, or something, going to go in the community. It's well-attended. We get to talk with them and hear their questions. And so getting to know them and getting to see all the kids too, they, you know, getting to know us. And it's been well-received. Is it quarterly you're doing it or monthly?
We do it monthly and that's partnership with Monroe Housing Authority. So that was our fourth Chat and Chew. And Dr. Bush, our director of tower, then he coordinates those with the housing authority for us. And so our plan is to visit every housing authority property to bring information to our citizens.
We're getting to know them. We're getting to know them, all of our stakeholders, and they're getting to know us. And it just makes for a good relationship and, and more cooperation. And so we may be in the neighborhood where you live pretty soon, but we hope to see you at Gibson. Um, we really thank you all, all of the stakeholders, for being here tonight. Uh, we value your input. We need you.